Well, we are Quora and it is eight o'clock.
Yeah.
So in the absence of everyone else, we will start and then we can get our finish nice and early. So thank you both for turning up.
No pleasure.
Yeah, welcome to the leisure services committee today, the 12th of April. I'm starting at eight o'clock in the evening. Oh, brother. Hello, good evening, brother. And so first of all, I want to ask if there are any apologies.
Yes, yes, we've had apologies from councillors Alson Jari, Gilder, Roland, Smith and Swallow.
Right, they can't do that and leaves the four of us by present. Right, any declarations of interest? Nope. Right, we're going on to the minutes of the meeting held on the 18th of January then, which were provided in the full council agenda of the 8th of February. So standard question, is it in order for me to sign those minutes? Yeah, thank you. And there were, because of the speed of the last meeting, there were a number of questions asked, which I see on appendix four and Kevin and Matt have put down all the answers. I'm hoping people have had the opportunity to see them and read them. Are there any further comments at all in connection with those responses?
Yeah, it seems appropriate to raise this, Michael, because I don't think it's on the agenda anywhere else. On the question of the young person's survey, I think this needs to be done before any service agreement is determined, so we know what the issues are with youth. It needs to be independent of the youth services provider, so I think we need to get on with this sooner or later. I've got a question as to why the community youth partnership hasn't met recently. And thirdly, I'm very concerned with the youth strategy. We discussed it, I believe, in November, but there's been no more progress as far as somewhere. I mean, how close are we to being in a position where we can actually tender for this service? You know, it's been a long time since Jack Pauline stopped doing the work. Clearly, you can see on page 10 that we mentioned antisocial behaviour, there is something deep for this. So can we, can we get on with it?
Yeah, I mean, I had words with Kevin before starting this meeting tonight and actually before this. So Kevin, could you bring us up to date?
Yeah, of course. So a couple of things. The full council approved the formation of a working party, which hasn't yet met to consider expressions of interest initially from interested providers. That invitation for expressions of interest will actually go out tomorrow on the website and via the government contracts finder. And also directly to a couple of organisations who have contacted us directly. So what that exercise is essentially, it's literally that, it's a form with some information about what we're looking for and so that we can see what their organisations that we want to speak, we would like to speak to. I'll be circulating the dates for the working party to meet. And I think probably the best way to do it is an initial meeting to work out the information that we want to gain from those providers when we meet them, so list the questions, formulate that list of questions. Meet with them, obviously. And I think the question about the survey, which as we know is one we've not cracked yet, and we've talked about it for quite a long time. I was thinking that through that working party and those initial discussions with organisations that are interested in providing that, I think you're right that the survey will probably be separate from the provider.
Oh, that's right.
But the information we will get from those interested parties, I think we can use to determine how the best way to do that survey, because the best one in the world, they know all about it. And we don't know some of those things and how best to do some of those things.
I agree, well, the survey companies could probably help us working, whoever we get to do it.
Yeah.
Mind what we have come up with doing.
Yeah. But I think that that is an information gathering process, I think, for members will be really, really helpful for us to do that. So after that, obviously, it's a little form turn at any point with contractors, so that first bits are key bits. There will be some dates very shortly for that work to guide into me. I think, I think you're all in, Alex, I'm in.
I think, was it, no, Richard, sorry, it was Richard.
Yeah, Richard. Yeah, I think it's Kay, myself and Richard.
And Andy.
And, and, and Jack. And.
Thank you.
That's okay. If you've got any points that you want us to raise, Alex, and consider, if you will kindly put them in email to me, I will ensure that they are discussed. Okay?
Thank you.
And then, you know, come back to you after, after the meeting. But, you know, that to me seems the best way of dealing with it. But, you know, it hasn't been forgotten that I want you to be aware of.
Thanks.
All right, the, the early answers, the update on the town centre garden, where I'm told that it's now being trimmed.
Thanks.
Yeah, so hopefully that will now start to look nice for the future. Does anyone else have any questions on those question and answers? Now, the tenders for the electrical work have now come in and they have been gone through, so I understand. And the defibrillator, we're still waiting for these, we still.
The case has arrived at last, it's been here for about three weeks. We're currently, it's an electrical case, so may have a timing, the electrical work is going to happen maybe around this year. Otherwise, we may have to school it and then have them school it pretty quickly. But maintenance team are on their list, so I should be too.
Okay, lovely. So unless there's any further questions on that, we'll move on to item five, which is budgetary control. I'll pass over to Kevin to talk about this.
Thank you, Jack. Just to note, obviously, this, this meeting slightly different to ours, because we are at year end. We've got those actual income expenditure figures against the revised estimates that we put forward in January. So I think without going through kind of each one in turn, the long and short of it, we have managed to get the expenditures all under, the exception of that ground motor, which is very slightly over, under the revised estimate and the income the other way around, which obviously is the way around we would like it. It was a really funny year for all sorts of reasons, with the pandemic and then furlough and the things that upset things in terms of business. I think as we go through this year, this will be a bit clearer and what I will, I'd like to do is possibly present some of this slightly differently going forwards in the way that we're trying to with S and R as well, so graphically as well, so that we can see spending against budget a bit clearer without having to sort of sit through numbers, but I will try and improve that for the next time.
Do we have any questions to talk about here?
I just wondered, on Woodford Park, the estimate, the income, the actuals come in, it consumes a bit more, the estimates, about 10% more. Do you think there's any particular reason why that's happened, obviously, we made the estimate back in January? It's obviously, it's good that we have more revenue than we expected, but we always have to kind of consider variances, obviously, as councillors. And so that's, that's quite significant extra that we've had in Woodford Park compared with what we estimated. Just wondering if there's any specific reason for that.
It's a specific, for the leisure, sorry.
Yeah.
Always going to put a look at the parks, isn't it?
Yes, for about 315 that comes in the 348.
Okay, so yeah, that's just, I mean, I wouldn't say anything specific. And we've managed to keep things quite consistent when we were putting together the income budgets in, like for that part last year. We still weren't really sure what was going to happen, a lot of things. What I would say that has happened is gym income steadily increased, which has been a good sign. That did plateau a little bit towards the winter. Because we were then able to operate without any restrictions at all, we could then open up capacity and things like that. And generally speaking, as I kind of said afterwards, it's not one thing that's done well, it's kind of a whole centre has started to kind of come back to life a little bit.
And you were trying to be prudent, presumably not be too optimistic.
I mean, I get, I get pushed to be optimistic, so. The, I'm, I'm very pleased that I've actually with things considered. And we've been blessed that we've managed to kind of keep together the majority of our staff team pre-COVID, which helps as well. Meaning that people could pick things back up where they left off a little bit more. But the majority of activities and bookings are now at term and that's reflected in the income.
Thank you.
I think it's fair to say that you haven't lost as many people also from the leisure centre that you expect to be there in the year.
I don't know the exact number, but at the peak of the pandemic, we lost about 60 to 70% of our months of work. I say we would probably be at a point now where around 70 to 80% have kind of got back to normal. But we did lose about 20% of our members and they haven't returned yet, for different reasons, of course. My job is to try and ask people, but very unfamiliar way, they're not being comfortable being around people. We're still kind of seeing those slowly increase at the moment.
Right. And I presume the furlough incomes all then added into the actual?
Yeah, that's identified certainly there in the bottom type, but yeah, the figure is within the.
Right, okay. Do we have any other questions?
Is there was something odd appearing with the coronation hall chapel hall estimate? Kevin, I think you came back to me to explain that, but I don't, you weren't here at the meeting to explain that. You know, the estimates were, it seemed low.
For this coming year?
No, for, for, for year end, when we estimated January, coronation hall chapel hall seemed to be low. I think there was some issue, you know, spotted.
Sorry, yeah, and I think there was an error in the previous budgetary control, which I then followed through in that vice versa.
Right, okay.
But yes, you, you can see there that they're coming higher than the revised estimate.
That didn't go forward.
Thanks. Okay. Any other questions at all? And perhaps we can move over to Ed's report on Woodford Park Leisure Centre, which is page 18. At the end of your agenda.
Thank you very much. So as I briefly touched on just there, the leisure centre is now pretty much returned to normal. We're able to operate without any COVID restrictions, which makes a big difference what we can and can't do. Obviously, it's a bit of a relief because we've been juggling all kinds of restrictions and different things over the last couple of years. So it's nice to have a little bit of normality back for an extended period of time. I've made it a little note that we've kept the sanitizer stations in place and everything, which I think is a bad thing. Actually, one of the things that really restrictions did do is allow us to kind of re-evaluate and things like that. We've actually learnt some good lessons from it too, so there have been some positives. There are some sort of things in the start sequence, of course, that is a problem. So far, we've managed to get away relatively easily. Strangely, we seem to have almost one person a week available at the moment rather than everyone at the same time, which is nice. So we avoided any closures or cancellations, but everyone was taking in turns, which is kind of good and kind of bad. And obviously, of course, there are still some people that choose to go marketing, it's up to that as well. Generally speaking, everything is quite positive at the centre and I think that's reflected in the income that we've seen for the end of last year. And one of the particular successes, just moving on, is our exercise class timetable, which is now finally able to operate at maximum capacity. Of course, that was hit quite hard by restrictions previously. Obviously, we didn't want to be around other people, so exercising around other people inside in particular became a problem. We had to lower the number of people who could go into rooms without distance and things like that. And as you can see there, our booking system brought the highest ever monthly attendance, which is a brilliant sign really for us. And we're now actually having the other side of those problems, whether having people not be able to get onto classes and things like that. So we're having to actually add more in just to kind of accommodate people. We've actually seen a bigger attendance level than the gym itself over the last five, three to four months. Which suggests people might get back to enjoying exercising with other people rather than their own. And of course, that does present changes with space and things like that. I was working on our summer sports programme, which again is going to be bigger than ever this year. We've, we're hosting the B1L Sunday, which is something that I believe this committee have already done, probably pre-COVID actually. And then we've cancelled and it's rearranged with past teams. So as you can see, that was just a bullet to kind of gruffly out of our sports field for the year. It's going to be live there basically, but it should be, really going to be a lot of people at the centre again. All of these things are trend obviously spectators and it's generally quite a nice feel in the summer, especially with the pathways going on and things like that as well. I saw there was a question about the paddling pool in the previous meeting, but certainly it was there actually, I can't remember because it was cancelled and rearranged again. So me and maintenance team have started work on the paddling pool. It's a long process and we had to properly agree to make sure that we don't kind of mess it up. It's an old system and I saw the kind of comments about how much money we might need to spend to get up and running again. The licence is a bit of a lottery every year, because it sits there throughout the winter, doesn't do a lot. Obviously, we need to properly clean. Maintenance team have moved the fencing from round the court, I think they're due to start working, it'll happen in the next couple of weeks. They handed that over to us in early May, we started putting chlorine in, monitoring the chemical levels, things like that. I'm optimistic we'll go for May half term, which is historically, we've always opened it. You can have one busy week and then all the kids go back to school, so it's quite a review, and then of course a big summer. But a lot of it depends on whether the pump works. If it doesn't, it seems to have risked about £1,000 for a new one. And they're quite rare as to how well the system is, so it's interesting every year, but we seem to always get it going at the end. But it's definitely going to build a bit for some future spending, sure. And then the last thing is I've been working on the return of the school sports week, which some of you may remember, we used to have it every year. We used to have thousands of children come up to the centre during the week before May half term and they basically take part in lots of different sport activities and sports paddling events. We used to do the swimming garden almost at the centre as dance festival, things like that. Understandably, a lot of the schools are kind of fighting their own battles with COVID, so not many of them particularly want to even pretend to be inside other schools. I think they're okay mixing within their school, but they don't want to add any problems in another school to the list. So it's going to be a much smaller kind of week this year, but it's going to be good to have it back either way. The dance festival has been cancelled, which is a bit of a shame because that was always a kind of a nice way to start the week, but an opening ceremony kind of feels weird. But we've got some multiple events for year one, year two, for the mother morning instead, I think. The quick break outside is going ahead, it's planned, hopefully all the schools attending. So it would be nice to have something back after what's been a two or three year break for me. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions for Ed or Matt before?
Yeah, Ed, do you have a sort of budget for the paddling pool or do you just include it within the leisure centre budget?
Include it within the centre budget, so to be honest, we want it to have a run. It's not too expensive, it's fine, it's, and the more, the more people, the hotter it is, the more chlorine we use for these reasons. I was guessing, I think, in a hot summer, we'd probably spend about £500 in chemicals for it across a year. And other than that, it's just the manpower and the kind of constant work required and that's what we want to do in the centre budget.
It's not heated, is it?
Just one thing to add, I'm intending to add something to the capital programme project list in this year, which will include requirements for the paddling pool, which will be the new pump.
Yeah.
I think Colin's sort of, yeah, I don't know if he's getting a close type of suitable, so that, that will be something that.
It always seems to be very popular.
Yeah, yeah, on the holidays and the small days, it's actually, it's hard to estimate that normal is at 500 people.
Super, thank you.
Right, well, thank you very much indeed for that. And we'll move on to parks and buildings number seven on the agenda, which is on page nine. Kevin, I'll pass over to you.
Thank you, Jack. First thing to note that Colin Holland, who was previously the building maintenance manager, he's actually been managing both the buildings and the grounds team for about six months or so. He's been formally appointed to the position of managing manager, so he is now managing both teams. That's been working really well through, through this period of, on an informal basis due to circumstances. But actually, that's now been formalised. What that's also meant is that within the budget allocation, we can now recruit a new person on the ground, on the grounds team. So we're recruiting now for a new grounds management team. Woodford Park Leisure Centre, the things we've mentioned there, electrical works, we've had the tenders in for the electrical works. We're going through them this week. There's, it's quite complicated, there's quite a lot of stuff in there, it's a full required, the whole building. And there are quite a lot of considerations in there. We're also very conscious of wanting to future proof it, there's other things we know we're going to want to do at some point, you know, we're going to need charging costs, we're going to need other things, you know, there have been changes in the building that we don't want to, you know, sell ourselves short at this point, but we've got an opportunity to get that right. So there's quite a lot of work involved in that, and we're going through those, those as we speak. That's it, the work, we will need to get on with it as soon as possible. So Colin is going through them this week and I'll be going through them next week to point to contractor to do that. We're really aware of potential impacts on activities at the leisure centre with the works being carried out, because it might be up to a potentially 12 week installation period, which is quite a lot of work. Doesn't mean that anything will be shoved for that period of time, but it means that there will be some, some things to look at and considerations about how we do it and how we minimise impacts on activities in the centre. There's a report going to Stressing Resources Committee to allocate funds for that, so that report will go next week, next Tuesday, to allocate funds for that, that bit of work. The flat roof thing is well underway, that's about halfway complete now. That was quite a long job following an issue with the previous installation. So that's going really well, that's a single ply membrane that's been applied across the whole of the flat roofing area of the leisure centre, that's about halfway through. Woodford Park play area, there's a work schedule, a gap chart attached over the page there at the end of day, showing hopefully a completion date by the end of May, which is on target, they've been cracking on really well with that and progressing well. The maintenance team has been doing a number of bits in house, the fencing and all the boundary with its yard there have been done in house and refurbishment of the shelter. That saves some money in the programme, which we've been able to put to a couple of other things, much better signage, for example, than was planned originally. So there's some, some good improvements that we can, we can expect through that. One of the items in the kit, which is due to its height, you require planning permission, which is a little bit of a canopy slide. So there's a planning application for that, the public consultation for that finished last week, so we should hear back on that very shortly. The pre-application advice did say that there would be no, or should be no implications for that in terms of the planning regulations. Didn't have, there'd been no comments posted to work in relation to that. Memorial flag, it was discussed back in the working party meetings for the play area, but it wasn't formally discussed. Was it a suggestion for there to be something in memory of councillor David Stairs, who was chair of the leisure services committee? Had done quite a lot of work in the early stages of that project particularly as well, I suppose, and there. And what we thought might be appropriate was to have a plaque perhaps in the sensory garden area, at the end of the play area there, that's just something nicely worded in memory of David Stairs. So there was a proposal for that for the end of, in the report. Parkline, we've been very keen to try and, so to say, parkline through, throughout the installation. And the arrangement at the moment is that I'm basically contacting with Parkline with the manager each week, so that he knows by Wednesday lunchtime in any week what it looks like, because there are some changes happening week on week with things moving around there. Obviously, there, there are some potential concerns from Parkline's point of view about, you know, they've got to keep things safe and they've got to make sure that the access through that area is safe every weekend. So with that in mind, this week, we're hoping to be facing back a little tomorrow, so I'm taking with Rolby your work tomorrow to make sure it's happening for that this weekend, and we're working it on that basis. And hopefully, we can, we can take Parkline through, throughout the rest of the installation now without the interview. What we have done, and you might have noticed, just mentioned now, the actual enclosure when they're working, we've changed the format. We had a couple of concerns from residents about vehicular access and conflicts with park users there. It's not, you know, it's not a great area to be driving vehicles around and moving things around next to the path. What we've done is basically closing the area for half off during the daytime when they're working and they're fencing that off. And then in the evenings and weekends, they're opening the pathway back up, so that people are still using the space. And we've got signage up to direct people around that area. It means they can work much more safely and people don't have to worry they're not in, in that area with the works being carried out. It seems to be working really well. Green flag, it's a full judging year for the green flag this year, because the team of judges come out and have a good walk around, talk to the staff, talk to the friends group and try and look in all the corners that we might be trying to keep them out of. We, we're looking at a date in, at the end of May, I just wait for the representatives to come back and tell me the date they're coming. And I think we'll do really well, the park has come on, this year we've done a lot of things in the park, it's, you know, it's looking great. And what they're looking for is not a pristine finished article, it's, you know, it's a really well used amenity. And that's why it scores so well in the application when we put it in the management plan, because it's so basic, it's got so much use. It is such an important community resource that actually, you know, that's always a balancing act, you know, how do you maintain it, keep it, you know, supporting all those things. So anyway, quite looking forward to that again this year, we get really useful feedback from that as well, things, things to work on for next year and just pick out certain elements that we might want to look at, since it's a continuous improvement programme, we've had that for four years now. Programme, we've had that for four years now, which I'm really proud of. We have had an increase in antisocial behaviour over the last couple of weeks. Actually, this weekend just gone, we had some just at the back here in the rotary yard, damaged some fencing. And an incident with a resident who felt intimidated by some activities, lots of young people in the park. So that's been a bit of a thing over the last few weeks. It tends to go in waves sometimes. We get a year that's a bit trickier than other years. But just to note that that's a bit of a thing at the moment. We have had some issues in the downed garden remembrance and the leisure centre as well around the tennis court area. So we're aware of it. We're reporting things to the police and the community police team as well until as they happen. So that they can just keep an eye on things. But it's, yeah, it's a tricky one, especially going to the summer period and holidays. Friends of Woodward Park, they've been carrying on as they normally do. The best they're looking after are looking great. They've taken on some of the space in the front of the Emperal Centre. And they've been able to get some volunteer labour from Sage again, which they've done previously through their employee volunteer scheme, which is great. Because they have a team of people come out and they've got them for a whole day and they can do some really good work around the park. Last year, they did all the railings around the garden remembrance, which is a sort of thankless task, but they did a great job. It looks really good. Storm damage, remember the storm we had in February, we did lose a few trees during that. And a few other things, but nothing major, thankfully, in terms of buildings or anything. We have a contractor carrying out full tree survey of all the trees in Woodward Park and the Llanfair Park. That's happening this week, actually, he's in doing that. That will flag up some works with increased budget initiatives, you know, there's gonna be some work that we have that obviously we've put quite a lot of time. But we just wanna be managing the trees better. And that will feed into the environmental policy as well, so that we're aware, you know, any work. Or if trees need to come out, or trees that are on their way out, that we're planting more than come out, we're, you know, maintaining our tree stock and increasing it. Malone Park, some areas are badly prepared for some wildlife, some sort of wildflowers. And also a wildlife margin around the edge of the park area there to try and encourage wildlife and pollinators. But also to keep it nice without it kind of getting out of control. Because there's quite a mix of things there. So there'll be like a mountain path through a section of that, which we think will work quite well this year. Big ones in apartments, still a really big waiting list. It's been really useful meeting with the tenants committee last week. And we've been looking at and really pushing smaller plots for newer tenants, because we've got a massive way of this. We've got an obligation to try and provide plots for as many people as we possibly can. And I think quite often people are daunted by a ten pound block. It's massive. It's quite often more than they can chew, that's sort of first attempt at taking on a lot. So we're very much pushing those smaller plots with an opportunity to move to a bigger one, if, you know, they can definitely, if they're well aware of the five pound block. A year or two, they can go back on the list or a bigger block. That seems to be working well.
Sorry, quick question, Kevin. Is it possible to share that information with a couple of residents who've asked about the meeting?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Is that all I can ask?
Yeah.
That one line?
Yeah.
Okay.
Kevin, is the entire site allotmented?
Because last time I was over there, which was years ago, and there was an awful lot of bannery areas. Yeah, there are some round the areas and we're clearing some of those. Colin's team going up and clearing some of those. Some of the areas that have been left deliberately slightly wild towards the back end where the bee enclosure is and things like that, because that worked quite well. We have increased the plots. I think in the last five years, I think it's probably another hundreds or so plots. It was three hundred and sixty plots, I think, three hundred and sixty-four plots, something like that.
No, 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 that'll comment. Some people have three plots.
Yeah, it's historic. And that doesn't happen anymore. But at the time, we had, we couldn't find people to take plots on.
Yeah, that's, it must be twenty-five years since I was over there. And it was, you know, take your pick of hundreds of empty plots.
Yeah, so there are a few, there's not many of them.
But there really is just a handful of those. Grandfathers' lives.
Yeah. Yeah, just to finish up, community halls. The place you can see is ours in Chanclet Hall. It's well overdue. There'll be some other works which might come into the capital programme to do with windows and some other things down there, because it needs a lift. It's old, but it's really well used and it's a good, it's a really good community space. I think it's used a lot. So it's an investment there to cover the capital programme, hopefully. And just to note, the wall separating Conish from Carpark from the flat stair came down in the wind. Just came down in one line, shattered all the car park. Our guys cleared it all up. And there's some questions about ownership of it, which we're just trying to sort out between residents. I think Hicks built it and whoever, so we're just trying to organise that. But most importantly, we've made safe, completely well up, up Chanclet. So that's it. And it's just that item for consideration.
Before I open up to for any questions, I've got one comment myself. On the antisocial behaviour, is there any way we can take photographs of what is happening and put them up on our website? So as to, can to show those people and to give them second thoughts?
Yeah, I'll see what we can.
And obviously, we can't take photographs of individuals against them. But we can highlight to the population what is actually happening and the damage being caused. It might make the residents more keen to.
Yeah, we can get a message out about that, along with some advice on what to do if you see something happen.
That is all, yeah. Alex, have you had a question?
On the flat roof, do we know what the cost is gonna be? You had about two forty, forty-six thousand?
It was forty thousand to six hundred, I think.
And we're not sure, the electrical work, we're not sure if it comes out of reserve or was some suggestion to be sealed money?
Yeah, so actually, the resolution, I think I'll have to check, was that, sorry, it's all electrics. Yeah, yeah, sorry, that hasn't gone yet. So that's going to Strategic Resources next week. So potentially, yeah, it could come from reserves. It wouldn't be appropriate for it to come from sealed monies as well, because it's cancelled investment in the building. Yeah, we can consider that. Just for information in terms of value, we're looking at a maximum far off of seventy thousand. We're hoping to be well under that.
Right, okay. On the tree survey, just to point out, we need something, we'll need something at Rivermead to replace the bushes. And that will have to be yanked out when we put in the faves. So that's a bit boring in my. And hopefully, even though, well, if we leave things alone, trees plant themselves, which is rather handy. So we might get trees for nothing if we leave things alone.
Incidentally, have we got any trees left that came from forestry?
There's a couple, most of them have been planted. I think there's some that are still waiting to go in, so.
Still waiting to go in, yeah. Anyone else, any questions? The recommendation is that we note the content of the report, which we all have. But we do need a vote to approve the provision of a plaque in the sensory garden area of the new play area.
Yes, absolutely.
Member councillor David Stairs. Everyone in agreement?
Yeah, definitely.
Thank you.
Are we still in contact with his wife? I know she was very poor.
No, his wife has dementia and I think she's gone into a home.
Yeah, I know the house, it's not happening.
The best person to ask on that is Keith, who might know what is happening, because she wasn't very well at all.
I haven't seen this before David died, so.
But anyway, we'll move on to item eight. Are there any future agenda items?
Question for Ed, really, on anything. It's not really agenda, it's just a general question. When you have lots of sports events and leisure events happening, such as Saturday, Sunday football and all that sort of stuff. How many parents come up and ask if there's a cafe on the side on a regular basis?
Probably what's maybe you'd expect, but of course, if they're regular, they'll know.
Yeah.
And for the bigger of the interests of the weekly B Y D L, they're like caring outside themselves. So they have a base, you know, after you start. Behind reception, we sell tea and coffee, for example, water, snacks, things like that. I would probably be saying certain increases in size is definitely something that should be considered. At the moment, you're probably not right on the line, you know, I mean, a lot of people are not. But yeah, hopefully, when we're ready, they can set these targets.
So I don't think a lot of people appreciate the cafes here, when they aren't regulars and they don't like, although there is signage that, you know, the area to.
Yeah, we send a lot of our guys over here. So I've been putting, say, for example, exercise classes finished, to their flat C and T's, we sell them here. So they'll come up with a date, hopefully, to see, we can cooperate, because they're always going to cooperate, of course. And that's probably what we do at the moment, if they want something a bit more substantial. But a lot of people tend to just go to their home, to be honest.
Okay.
And we're gonna sit at the park in some sense.
Okay, thanks.
David, I've got something, and I should have emailed you completely, because I'm constantly busy. Fifty years in October since the Long Bridge disaster. And I thought it would be quite nice if we could have a plaque under the bridge with the names of the three men that died. And recognising forty-six people that were injured in that disaster. And just something along lines of near this site on October the twenty-fourth, I think it was, nineteen seventy-two, this happened. And it was just something that was there, just showing some.
I'm gonna show my equipment. I remember it happening, but I can't think what happened.
They were building, the three, as you go under Long Bridge motorway, they were building three, I can't think what they're called now. Road dents across the motorway. And they'd done, I can't remember, nine of them. And what they used to do is put a wooden frame up, fill it with metal work, pump concrete in, wait for it to set, move along, do the next one. And they were on this particular one, which was over the river, and the whole lot collapsed. And all these guys went into the river with however many hundreds of tonnes of concrete. Three people died. And I think it was forty-six were injured. And, well, hardly anyone knows about it. And I just said, it's fifty years this year. I thought it'd be a good thing to acknowledge some.
Contributing something. I had some contact from the club at Ernie. A discussion that's happened, I think, between them and Winers. And she'd asked whether Woodley would be interested in talking to them about what we might be able to do if there was something perhaps joint to give them. I didn't know anything about it either until she said, I don't know what I was talking about. So I looked it up. And yeah, so I think there's an opportunity there to help, to do something worth while. I'll find out what their intention is likely.
Yeah, I first found out about an open university group disasters. And you think, hang on, that's here. I can't remember the event myself, but I do remember building the bridges, I don't remember the event. So can we have an investor? Because it shouldn't cost hundreds of pounds to have something up on that bridge. You know, I'm thinking where the, as you go underneath towards the George, up on that wall there, it's always lit. Just something there. So if I find out or have a conversation with Ernie and Winers about that. See what their thoughts have been. So we don't do the same things to give them three times.
Yeah.
Yeah, that would bring something back.
Good idea.
Just a reminder, is it Woodley?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Robert. Have we done publicity and website? Anything with publicity or the website?
Yes, the Facebook page, Woodward Town Council. Do you do that, man?
Oh, I'm a nuskr, I think.
Yeah, nuskr.
Okay. Could we have that up sort of, I don't know, every Friday afternoon? This week, this has happened. Next week, that's happened. Just some bullet points. So people can see what is going on. And don't think we're just, well, you know, we're not doing anything or nothing's being done. Just giving updates on things. So the community garden, the park, the trees, just little bullet points of things that are going on. It doesn't have to be a full and exhaustive list if people won't look at it with it, but just something. I don't know, but without making a burden or something.
Yeah. Do you think that initial would have the time to?
Yeah, I think it's more, probably more like, hey, it's us communicating that information to the nuskr, so you know.
Yeah.
Because it's literally, you know, one page, it's just there, that's fine. Yeah, that'd be, I think that'd be great.
Yeah.
Yeah. Thank you.
Yeah, maybe we'd let the residents know as well. So that brings the formal meeting to an end. I've just got one thing that I wanted to ask of the committee. We have a little problem with the allotment holders, which I'm not going to go into details on at this moment. But I would like two people to meet with me so that I can go through in depth with you what the problem is. And see whether you have other ideas as to how the council may resolve it.
I'm unhappy to.
Yeah, it'd be good for you to be there, Alex, as an opposition member.
I know one of the cohorts very well for forty years, so I might be biased.
Which way, I don't know.
Would you be prepared to meet me?
Yeah.
I reckon half an hour.
Yeah, just say when, yeah.
Will be ideal. And if you could, that would be great. If you just let me know what time is convenient. And then we can sit down.
Your overtime, so I think.
Wish I was.
I need to be.
And we can actually sit down and I can go through what the problem is, highlight what we've done already. And then hopefully, we can get it settled once and for all.
If you're around lunchtime, you can meet me.
So are you okay with a lunchtime?
Yeah, 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 that's.
Really, I'm, I work time, so it would be easy for me at lunchtime.
Lunchtime, right, okay. And what, professionally, what day is convenient to you?
I've got back on it this Friday, but any day normally, so take a penny, really.
You say this Friday?
No, I'm saying this Friday's a back on it.
Of course it is.
Yeah, and then Monday's back. How soon were you thinking?
Could you make Thursday lunchtime?
At the moment, reasonably, I think it's a good. Yeah, I'm gonna go in, yeah, I'm gonna be alert for this, yeah.
Yeah.
I'll have to check, I'll get home, but yeah.
Okay, yeah, so twelve o'clock, one o'clock, something like that. That would be absolutely ideal.
Right, I'll check tonight.
Okay, so if you could email me what time you prefer, then I'll get that, you know, actually, practice that with the weekend, good weekend. Just to talk through. And that would be lovely. But thank you for that. Other than that, there's no other items of business. So I'll bring the.
Sorry, just one thing. Have you avoided having meetings in school holidays? Because I think that's probably why we're a bit short on numbers today. There's a few illnesses and extra meetings. There's only one person that's away. That's been really bad. Thank you.
But anyway, thanks everyone for coming. I'll call this meeting to a close.
Thank you. Cheers. Thank you.